All right, welcome to the board meeting of the Castro Valley Unified School District. I'm calling the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I thought, or I would like to have the agenda approved.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions? Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so the agenda is approved. Are there any requests for public comment? All right, then we will recess to close session. Thank you. See you back at six. All right, we're live, thank you. We are reconvening to open session. Welcome to the board meeting of the Castro Valley Unified School District. My name is Dot Theodore and I have the honor of being your president and my pronouns are she and her. We did not take any action in closed session today. Mission statement, Vice President Whitaker.
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must request, must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, the speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comments but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. All right, we will move on to the next item, which is school report and recognitions. Mr. Khan?
Thank you and good evening. I apologize in advance for my voice. I lost it, I haven't quite found it. I'll let you know when it turns up. I am Principal Kenny Khan of Redwood High School. Tonight I am joined by our 2022 site Educator of the Year, Matt Hoffman, and our student recognition, and our Student of Honor tonight, Soroya Monroe. So our site hosts five different alternative programs. Redwood High School is the nucleus. It's the Credit Recovery Continuation Alternative Program. We can't help but notice that programs are people. Looking through that, again, these people, Matt Hasselbruck in social science, also teaching food and life skills. Mr. Matt Hoffman, Social Science, Physical Education, and Horticulture. We've brought back the garden, he's bringing it back with students. It's an amazing life lab and, and again, a vocational program that is highly beneficial. Ms. Kalisha Jones, Science and Cyber High. Lynn Inian, Special Education. Ray Viegas, Mathematics. Joshua Wheeler, English Language Arts. And joining us now, teaching both English and art classes, Ms. Carly Basera, graduate of CVHS. Looking at our Redwood Counseling and Rich Program. While Trustee Adams no longer is at the helm of that program, I'm seeing that she's wearing her hat tonight and we appreciate the representation. We have a new teacher, Ms. Melissa Biggs, in the program and she's doing an awesome job working collaboratively with the Seneca Maxopa program leads as well. Looking at our Redwood Independent Study Intervention and Home Hospital Program, Tony Stravopoulos down on lower campus. Roy Johnson, Adult Transition Program this year took a bit of a shift with the retirement of Ms. Maureen Kennedy and we brought on Mr. Jason Keough. And to see both he and Ms. Brown work together collaboratively to bring back a community-based program for our 18 to 22-year-old students is phenomenal. And then lastly is the Castro Valley Virtual Academy with Ms. Kelly Abbott, with a teacher on special science, on special assignment, mathematics, special education. Ms. Elza Andres, teaching social science. Carly Basera is also teaching art over there. Ms. Miriam Dominguez with Spanish. Dr. Sylvia Perry with CBVA Science. Ms. Sherry Rodriguez for Physical Education. And Ms. Jean Seifert for CBVA English. So who are we if we were to look solely at the lens of Redwood High School? Looking at our social, there are a couple areas that I highlighted that I see that are, you know, disproportionate across both our comprehensive site along with our district-wide percentages. And so I noticed that, you know, our socioeconomically disadvantaged are almost double, but we see district-wide or at our comprehensive site almost nine times or five times of our foster youth, you know, two and a half, almost three times, both of those, both of these measures. And also with our students with disabilities, at 28%, almost three times for both of those as well. So we work with the population of high needs students with a variety of different needs and we're committed to that. We have a phenomenal staff who spends, you know, an abundance of time giving them multiple access points to quality rigorous instruction. One thing, one thing that we're proud to hang our hats on this year is that by the end of Hex semester two, you know, October 28th, we will have seven students eligible for early graduation. Looking at our race and ethnicity breakdowns, also a disproportionate number that I noticed is that for our Asian students, where almost 2% were across the board. It's almost 30 at most of our secondary sites or district-wide with our Hispanic students actually being doubled along with Pacific Islander. You know, again, small numbers, small school, but we're a concentrated group of about 130 students. Last spring, I had the pleasure of getting to work with Brian Bessard, cinematographer and, and his camera crew. They had, I believe, done the All Means All video for sharing up kind of our district-wide initiative and, you know, I would have been remiss if I didn't get to share a brief snapshot of who we are at Redwood with this, with this video to share. Hello, I'm Kenny Khan, Principal at Redwood High School. Welcome.
I was like still new here, it was like probably my first week. A group of kids who was also like walking into school took me in. They just kind of like swooped me up and was like, you're gonna hang out with us like every day. So I felt like very welcomed here, like right away, within like the first week or so.
Redwood doesn't really have the greatest reputation, actually. Like coming here and seeing it yourself, like even the environment, like it's so chill and it's so nice and like warming, so that's what I really like about it.
There's this like feeling that the staff and teachers, they actually care about you, like they want to see you succeed. And since I feel like the classes are smaller at Redwood, like it's kind of more of a family.
Our school environment is a very small peaceful environment. A lot of students come from the big high school and step on campus and realize that it's just a total change of pace. We have beautiful grounds, our classrooms are clean. We take pride in making this campus the best for our students.
I love all my teachers. They all help me with like specific things, obviously. So like Ms. Jones, I love her. She's very like hands-on with forensics and everything. I love that because I'm not really good at like writing stuff down and just like reading from a textbook to write down. I'm like more hands-on with labs and everything, so that's really good.
It's pretty, it's really chill here, it's really nice and don't be afraid of anything. That means like teachers, talking to new people, doing your work because there's always a solution here and that's what Redwood is for, is helping out. And so there's nothing to be afraid of when going to a new school.
One of the fundamental things here is that we meet students where they are, where they come from, and it's not about really, you know, like a top-down situation where it's like you need to absorb this content and like pair it back, pair it back to us. We try to like find out what motivates a student, what do they actually care for, what do they care about? And I've seen this with a lot of my colleagues as well. And, you know, once you can connect, create a safe rapport with someone, they might open up and actually want to produce work that is valuable to them other than just like producing work for, for a grade.
In general, it's just, it's pretty nice to be here. The teachers are really cool and they really care about you and they actually have like good conversations and they're actually here to help you.
I'm a much better student, I'm actually passing my classes. I didn't pass anything before, especially during online school.
It's a really good place because you can come here when you're down at your baddest, both like mentally but also like academically. And that's what I did. I came here both for my academic reasons but also for my mental health reasons. The classroom that I go to is meant for reintroduction into school. I think it's amazing that there's something like that, but I think it should be made for all ages.
Well, I mean, what's special about the school environment is after a while, students can come here and begin to like change in a positive direction. Like old habits maybe that were holding people back may begin to be replaced with new routines that will allow somebody to be more successful, however you define that, whether that's coming to class more or earning more credit or doing better in class, having a better relationship with their peers and teachers. That's what I really like about this school.
Thankfully, we're small. We have a really, really good staff that puts in a lot of time and a lot of energy to come up with a lot of good curriculum and exercises that are different than what students do at a comprehensive school. And it kind of resonates with our student population better. And then thus with more interest comes better grades, better feelings.
I think one of my favorite memories was the first barbecue that we had because, I don't know, it was just really fun because like, because it's smaller. So it's like more of like a small little community and I was just really happy that I came here for my senior year and finished on like a really good start.
I like working with our students because when they get to Redwood High School, a lot of the times they feel very defeated and not being able to do high school. Having them here at Redwood and really seeing their growth, it's a really good feeling.
I've worked in a variety of schools and learned over my years of experience that, you know, each student is really unique in their own way. I think it's really a benefit to have schools like this and for us to be able to work so closely with our students and our families and our staff all together to really see what each individual student needs. The traditional way just doesn't work for everyone. So being able to be creative and really have the smaller setting that we can do that and we can be more flexible is just really helpful.
Our faculty and staff regularly scaffold and differentiate to the diverse learning needs of our students. In conjunction with Castro Valley Unified School District's motto, "All Means All", we're committed to supporting the diverse community of students that come to Redwood High School.
I came to Redwood High School seven years ago and did not know what to expect. See, people think that Redwood is a school filled with wild students, airplanes sailing through classrooms and burning trash cans. They think that going to Redwood is giving up and settling for less than your dreams. They think that our school is a place that the underachieving go to wait out their days till they're fed to our new American century. But perceptions are not always reality. Our school is a place that will allow you to start fresh. A family that will hold you accountable to high expectations and remind you that there is still a dream to be dreamt. A school that will accept the misfits and give direction to the students that may have lost their way. The truth is, we all lose our way at one time or another. Forget our purpose, get stuck in a cycle of losing situations that suck out our ambition and lay waste to aspiration. The truth is that most of the students at this school have already faced more adversity and struggle than any student in any school in our district. That makes them stronger than most, more equipped to tackle a lifetime of obstacles and there will be obstacles. But the greater the struggle, the more enormous the success. The story of your success will be epic, more compelling than the lucky who have been given their future on a silver platter, more fantastic than the 4.0 student, more inspiring than the scholarship athlete. But know this, nothing worthwhile comes easy. Where there's opportunity, there's also opportunity costs. We can change the future, but first affect your future. So at the end of our journey, we can go out into this black hole world and become supernovas. Continue to learn, be comfortable with who we are even when others are not. Love with abandon and work our knuckles to the bone, don't settle, ever. Learn when to remember and when to forget, seek knowledge in strange circumstances, travel to expand our vision, face adversity and know that we will be victorious. Pay things forward, keep food on the table and the fire lit. pave the pathways of the future, make your mark. Be a boss or a laborer, but do with dignity. Love, live, become. At this moment, the future is laid out like a mighty tapestry at your feet. You can be anything you want in this world, you want to work for, but it all starts here.
Some key staff that I forgot to mention earlier. Last year, at the, at springtime, we welcomed Ms. Aponti, our new secretary and registrar. Ms. Emily Lindsay is our new attendance tech. Mr. Louie is our new building and grounds operator. We were, we were able to bring on a part-time campus security officer, Ms. Jensen. That's been a great partnership with Mr. Pleasant as the two of them work just hand in hand, working with our, with our students in the most loving and caring of ways. I think about also Ms. Nina Ascension and Ms. Noah Mandl, who support as both our counselor and school social worker with wraparound periphery support, student wellness. Again, in conjunction, partnership with our teachers. The community care message is going to be continuous at Redwood. We'll find success for you. Small margins, great margin. The marginalized are the students who didn't think that they belonged. They belong at Redwood and we're happy to, happy to welcome any and all who come there. At this point, I'd have to, I'd like to pause and when, when ready, we'll begin with our student recognition.
Thank you very much. Yes, we'll have the student recognition and then we'll have some opportunity for our comments from the board. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Soroya Monroe up here. Is she in attendance tonight? Yeah. The governance team, along with Redwood High School, are proud to honor Soroya Monroe. Soroya joined the Redwood community her junior year and has been an absolute pleasure to work with in the classroom and in school-sponsored activities. She was pivotal in bringing the school community a screening of Romeo is Bleeding, followed by a post discussion with the feature of the film Dante Clark on topics like trauma-informed practices and the importance of developing and maintaining creative outlets for our teenage youth that promote self-expression. This fall, Soroya met with students to engage them in a discussion about extra and co-curricular activities that would boost their ownership and involvement in the school community. With key talking points, she shared with site staff and school leaders. Soroya will graduate early from Redwood High School at the conclusion of this month. While we will miss her dearly, we're excited to see her move forward in her post-secondary studies and career goals. Thank you for all the great memories, Soroya. You are Panther pride. The governance team joins Redwood High School in honoring Soroya Monroe as an outstanding student.
Soroya, not to put you on the spot, but did you want to say anything? And you don't have to, like, but you're so on the spot right now.
I'd like to take time to thank Principal Khan and any teachers that have nominated me for this award, as I was and the way I was receiving it. I did go to Redwood my junior year and when I went there, I felt defeated because I wasn't really aware that like my life was going to take a turn that way. But I can say that Redwood has made me feel welcome and like such a great asset to the school and just the support that teachers give and the staff, it really is a family. Like it feels more than a school, it's really a family. So I really appreciate going there and I appreciate the teachers and the board for honoring me this way. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Khan, if you could please come back up. We're gonna have some board member comments. We'll start with Quentin.
My only comment is that I just want to thank you for the amazing video and the amazing presentation. I know a few people that have gone to Redwood and transferred back to the high school and have also transferred from the high school to Redwood. And everything I've heard about it has just been that they've received nonstop support from your staff and your teachers. And that Redwood really allowed them to get back on the right track, you know? Especially after COVID, with a lot of students struggling online, Redwood has really just been a safe haven for them. So thank you for all the work you're doing and for all the work you will continue to do in the future.
I have three quick comments and then two questions, if that's okay. First comment, I still feel very honored when I see you because I think I've shared this with you before. You're the first principal. I have the honor of officially, with the board, we, we hired you. So I, it was just such a momentous moment in my life as a board member. So, and I've appreciated the opportunity to go up to Redwood and to get to know it more. Secondly, your baseball field is my son's favorite in the entire district. So thank you for having the coolest baseball field in the district. And it's always such an honor to hear Mr. Wheeler speak. He, he just really is someone I wish I could learn from and bring my thoughts together and expressing myself. So I just, it's always just an honor and he really encaps, it really speaks to the call to action at Redwood and I'm just so proud of how your students thrive and find, find, find pathways forward. And two quick questions were, now that we're getting into sort of a maintenance, if you will, with COVID, like we, we've seen the impacts, how has that shifted the, the role of a continuation high school? I tend to think like we, we're going to have a mental health crisis that we, we'll need to intervene in for, for quite some time. And I'm just wondering from a learning angle, how, how things have shifted at a continuation high school? And I was just concerned as a board member, I saw a pretty high percentage of your students are Hispanic, right? Do you have any sense of what we need to be doing as a district to have a distribution of students that are more representative? Thanks.
I will, I will attempt to answer each of those questions the best of my ability. Just to, so I'll start by saying, you know, COVID and school closures had a, had a large impact on all schools, had a tremendous impact on a continuation alternative site where habitual truancy had already been an issue. When we talk about the socioeconomically disadvantaged students, you can imagine the impacts of their resources at home. Really thankful for the one-to-one laptop models. Last year, we had really emphasized the need for our students to not only have one at home but also Chrome cards filled at our school sites because sometimes our students just need that extra nudge as we're moving into 21st century teaching and learning. Our teachers have had to adapt in a variety of different ways that both with teaching instruction in person, providing accessible teaching and learning exercises and assignments through things like Google Classroom or through varying modes of credit recovery. We've noticed that through the Cyber High Program that Redwood students really thrive because they can study, you know, a course by unit and earn, you know, a unit worth of credit versus perhaps maybe like edginess that's a little more difficult of an asynchronous program where you could see maybe in CBVA. I think the, the percentage of our student demographic also speaks to perhaps, and, and part of the slide that I had shown in terms of percentages also had a higher number of ELLs at our school site. And Mr. Wheeler, ELA teacher, also happens to be our, our site rep to support all the SADI methods and strategies. And I can also imagine a number of those students also fall under a special education designation. Is that when you have that large concentration, where do these, where did this occur, right? Was it something that perhaps was lower level, that was unidentifiable, maybe in the K through five into maybe secondary beginning, maybe getting tested for an IP or the SST to 504 IP process? They're there with us now. And so we want to get not only as many, you know, to earn a high school diploma, but also recognize also after high school, because I think there's also that dialogue about you go to high school, you graduate, you go to college. What are also the college and career paths and opportunities, vocational programs, military, adult program, adult school program that we have here, phenomenal program that we have here. And so, yeah, I think it's also a question of what additional resources are available to those families, to those students. So thank you. Hopefully I answered as much as possible.
So Kenny, thanks for the report. I mean, Redwood is such a, has so many important functions for the district. You know, as you showed on your first slide, there's a whole bunch of different things that you do and they're all critical for us. You know, it's part of the safety net for the school. You know, as one of the students in the, in the little video said, you know, you can make up credits if you need to up there. But I think it's even more than that, it's just that there's, you know, all kinds of different ways that students learn and you guys provide a whole bunch of different ways to allow them to do that, not just because they need credit recovery, but just because they need a different environment and they'll be successful. You know, I mean, you have smaller classes, a really highly dedicated faculty, amazing group of teachers. And, you know, you've got Independent Study of Virtual Academy, you know, you've got the whole spread up there and I think that's fantastic. So thanks so much for all you and all your teachers do up there for us. We, we really need that facility up there, so thanks a lot.
Well, it's really good to see Redwood. Of course, Redwood is very, you know, a warm fuzzy place in my heart for Redwood. I was talking to Parveen recently and she was telling me her favorite teaching, you know, place where she taught. And of course, you know, then I, I said, of course, you know, for me, it was Redwood. And, you know, I've said before, of course, it was very hard to leave Redwood and, but I'm glad to be able to go back when I can. It's good to see the videos, see the changes that are happening. The, the dedication of the teachers at Redwood is unbelievable. You're taking students who have, you know, may have all kinds of different issues or problems and because of the small setting, it's almost as if every student has their own individualized education plan. It's like everybody has that because it's personal. Everybody knows your name at Redwood. You can't be the kid in the back that is hiding. You know, people are going to know and know what you're doing and that kind of thing. And that is extremely valuable to, to the students, their parents, and all of Castro Valley Unified. Thank you so much.
Hi, Principal Khan, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I just, you know, I don't want to repeat everything that everyone said again. And I just wanted to say, you know, when you, you showed us the numbers, it's so much more than that because the programs you offer meet kids where they're at, wherever they're at, whether that's they face diversity, whether that's they have neurodiversity or need social and emotional support. It's really that meeting It's really that meeting kids where they're at, wherever that is. And it, you know, our society places a lot of pressure on kids to conform to what society thinks is normal and okay. And really, we're all unique and different. We all bring a value and it's okay to be wherever you're at because we have a whole lifetime to figure out that stuff. I mean, I didn't graduate from college with my bachelor's till I was 30. You know, we all find our way and there's always a path for someone. So, I just want to say, thank you for everything that you and your staff does to create such a great environment. And Soraya, congrats for graduating early. You go. I'm sure you'll do great and amazing things and I wish you all the best of luck.
So, Mr. Khan, one thing that was really impressive and stuck out to me during your presentation was the diversity of students that are served, but also the diversity of programs that are offered. And it strikes me that for the students, every student that's in each one of those programs has a unique set of needs that really couldn't be served in any other school or any other program other than the programs that you're offering. And the way that you and your team connect students, many of whom may not have made that connection at one of our other schools and bring them in. One of the students in the video talked about belonging and helping students to feel as if they belong. There's a group of adults that will help them reconnect and help move them along with care is so inspiring. So, I want to thank you and thank your team for doing that amazing work. And also, Soraya, as you were speaking earlier, I was blown away with the impact that you're having to be a young person and thinking about how you can contribute to the community of your school, the way that you're doing is also inspiring. I'm excited to see you graduating early and moving on to do amazing things. I'm even more excited to hear back from you at some point in the future and see what you do because I think you're going to go on and just be an amazing young adult when you make that transition from high school. So, thank you, Mr. Khan, and congratulations, Soraya.
All right, I get the last comment. Thank you for that wonderful video. It was really great to see and hear from all of the students and teachers. I was especially struck by the student who said that Redwood doesn't have a very good reputation and how they were surprised when they got there. I've always considered Redwood High School a gem in our community, a hidden gem. So, I hope that that narrative gets flipped as we progress through our time. I just think you have a wonderful program and I'm glad that it's part of our district. Thank you very much.
Again, can't thank you enough for the investment, support and affirmation you provide both our students and our staff. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the student board member report. Quentin, you're up.
All right, I'll try and keep it short and sweet. At Benoy, they had their walk to school day today and that was also at the high school. We also had our walk and roll to school day. The chance to read with the Jensen, chance to meet with the Jensen Rance principal, Ms. McLean. She told me about a few of the things they're doing over there with the students. They're having flip grid challenges for Hispanic Heritage Month that are focused on giving students a fun way to learn about the culture. They have a student-run newspaper, which I thought was pretty cool. Also, a pumpkin patch at the end of the month from the PTA, which sounds pretty amazing. Celebrating Dios de los Muertos activities and they're again focusing on the culture through those fun activities. Students are excited to have a normal year and they're really focusing on supporting the transition from distance learning to in-person learning. And moving on to the high schools activities, we had our homecoming week last week. Students got to participate in skit, dance and float class competitions, as well as a clothing drive, spirit rallies and our homecoming assembly parade and dance. It was a busy week for us over at the high school. The homecoming football game was last Friday and the varsity team pulled out a big 35-0 win against the Ensignel Jets. Our first in-person homecoming parade was also on Friday and the community attended as well. We had great attendance for the first year since COVID that we've had an in-person parade. And our dance was on Saturday around 1,900 students were in attendance, which is a very high numbers, the biggest we've seen in a while. And walking roll to school day, as I mentioned, was also today. The PSAT was administered today for all freshmen, sophomores and juniors. Fun times. College Awareness Week was last week. Multiple colleges visited and our amazing College and Career Center also hosted financial aid and application workshops for seniors, just to help them get started on that path to college. And that's all I got. Thank you.
So, curiosity is killing me. Who won the float competition and who won the skit?
Overall, seniors on top, sophomores in second place, juniors in third place, which, whatever, maybe next year. And freshmen in last place. I hope so. We'll see.
Superintendent's report.
So, with November coming, as a reminder, November will be Indigenous Peoples Month. And during the month of November, we acknowledge and celebrate the contributions and culture of Indigenous people throughout the month. We stand in solidarity with our Indigenous families and community, specifically the Muehmacma Aloni people, who are the original inhabitants of Castro Valley and all of the land that we live in, how our schools are on. Over 8.5 million acres of land was stolen from the Muehmacma people. So, we acknowledge them. We acknowledge all of their past and present struggles and the contributions and the gifts that they have given and continue to give to our community. Additionally, resources are available for our teachers and our community regarding the Indigenous people and some lessons that can be used beginning next month. Thank you, Ms. Eagles, Chuliza Eagles, if you're out there for gathering those resources for everyone. Also, next week is our professional development day on October 17th. We're going to be focusing first and foremost on our professional learning communities. For those that don't know, professional learning communities are when teachers and other staff members collaborate around student data to help improve student outcomes. They focus on the four essential questions. What do we want students to learn? How do we know if they've learned it? What do we do if they have not? And how do we enrich and extend learning if students have learned it? So, it's not just about recovering lost learning, but also about helping students achieve at their highest levels. And so, this work has been ongoing work. It's at the heart of our multi-tiered systems of supports. So, PLCs are really critical because that's how we identify what specific needs each student has. In our district, those are not just academic supports, but also social emotional supports. So, students will, or teachers will be continuing that work during our professional development day. We'll also be doing training on compassionate dialogue. And compassionate dialogue is, training is being provided through EPIC. And compassionate dialogue is the system of strategies that folks can use to help engage in, you know, somewhat challenging conversations, things like race and other things in ways that bring communities together rather than creating conflict. So, they talk about building bridges rather than creating divisions. It's not just a job skill, it's a life skill to be able to engage in these conversations. Also, this, for this professional development session and moving forward, we've emphasized including our classified staff as well with these trainings. And so, they'll be participating in the compassionate dialogue training and other trainings as well, including special education and other areas of need. Last week on October 5th, we had our elementary Padres Unidos meeting and it was a huge success. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 parents and family members attending this meeting. If you know Guillermo Gutierrez, Tilsia Olaya, Doris de la Torre, Afi Sklute, Nia Rashishi, who's sitting in the audience today. They, those are powerhouses in our elementary schools and they helped to organize a really special meeting where we helped to energize our parents from our Hispanic Latino community and make sure that we're providing them with resources and responding to their needs. Also, last week on the 6th, online, we had our first D-LAC meeting of the year. And that is our District English Language Advisory Committee. So, families and parents from all different backgrounds of English learners meet and we discuss things like how to make progress, how to make sure that we're encouraging parents to support our schools, also gave an update on our dual language immersion program and also had a very good turnout for that session as well. Because it was online, we were able to provide concurrent translation, meaning there wasn't a need to start and stop the translation. So, families were able to participate in the meeting in real time rather than having to wait for translation. And that is about it. I was told by Ms. Kair, I better stick to under five minutes or she would be stopping me very abruptly.
Thank you for the update. Are there any questions about?
I just wanted to say, sorry, it's okay. With our PD day, I think it's really important that we are working with our teachers to be able to give, continue to provide them, you know, the skill sets to model certain behaviors to set our students up for success. When you look at the world today and you're either working in whatever work you're working in, to be able to have those skills, I mean, we are in a globalized economy. And if you can't relate or understand or work with or collaborate with, it's going to be really hard to progress in your career. It's going to be really hard if you keep hitting up and having conflicts. So, to be able to teach those things and work with our teachers to model that behavior really sets our kids up for success. And so, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is a three to five minute recess, but I would like to suggest that we not recess and just continue on since we don't have a very packed agenda. Any objections? Anyone need to go to the bathroom? Okay, right on. Okay, so we will move on to our CSCA and CVTA reports. Are there any folks on? Okay. All right, public comments. We have one card, Heather. Oh, okay. All right, we'll take Heather since you're here. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Justice Gorsuch recently wrote, "The Constitution and the Best of Our Traditions counsel mutual respect and tolerance, not censorship and oppression, for religious and nonreligious views alike." In the aforementioned Kennedy case, a school district argued that students feared being discriminated against because they did not want to pray with the coach after school hours. The court said that there was no coercion from the school, therefore, no validity to these fears. Using a similar argument in the situation with the murals in our schools, I fear that students in our district are afraid of being discriminated against because they do not agree with the murals that have been painted at all the schools in Castro Valley District. When deciding on whether or not a government entity is violating the Establishment Clause, the courts now look at whether or not the schools are coercing students to believe a certain belief or that their religious belief is wrong and that the school's belief is correct. Our school district is coercing children to believe in their beliefs of what the progressive flag represents. This is evidenced by the following. First, our district employees use school time to put up progressive flags that directly violated mine, other children's and my children's religious beliefs. Second, after parents filed complaints with the district and during the investigation, Jason Rimmon, the Assistant Superintendent, wrote, and I quote, "These flags have been painted with the support of churches within our community." This shows that the school is violating the Establishment Clause by using church's belief system to coerce children to believe that all Christian churches support what the murals represent. Lastly, there is a banner that states Castro Valley Union Beliefs with a list of things that I and my children do not believe. If this is not coercion and a violation of the new Establishment Clause laws and interpretation, I don't know what is. On this note, I would like to bring up the petition that has brought, that has been brought by a community member that only elected school board officials will set policy directions that impact the LGBT community. The current board has exasperated the hostile environment by making statements, enacting practices and policies that discriminate against students and parents that do not believe in what the murals stand for. It is therefore imperative that this petition never be adopted by the school board. It is also imperative that parents that are in favor of the board not having this kind of power over the direction of their children's education, stand with me to recall this current board. Only after this board is recalled and an unbiased board elected will it be fairness and tolerance.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. All right, okay. Hi, Sarah, welcome to our meeting.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I am the parent of four students in CVUSD, a fifth grader currently at a therapeutic non-public school and a second, third and fourth grader at Chibbo Elementary. I'd like to start by saying that I fully support the programs described in the Supporting Families Through Community Partnerships presentation given during the last school board meeting. At the same time, as a parent of students needing special education services, it was painful to listen to and realize that we are not given the same support or compassion. Just once, I would love to listen to a school board meeting where the presentations are all about supporting families of students in special education. I would love to hear administrators and school board members congratulating each other and gushing about how much they value those families and prioritize listening to them, believing them and supporting them so that their students can thrive too. I would love to see actions that are inclusive instead of just words and for those actions to be celebrated. Basically, I'd like to see the care and compassion that clearly exists at Redwood High School extended to all students in need of special education and their families. When it comes to students with disabilities, the message is that the whole picture doesn't matter. A very clear line is drawn between school and home as well as the community and it cannot be crossed when it comes to discussing a special education student's needs and appropriate supports. I know this from my own experiences and from others who have shared similar struggles. The challenges that children in need of special education services and their families face don't stop and start at their front door any more than the challenges that students and families being supported by the Community Partnerships Program apparently is on due. The whole picture does matter. When families are supported and valued, all students benefit and our community is lifted up. That includes acknowledging and valuing the experiences and needs of special education families and supporting them through community partnerships and parent liaison programs too. Being inclusive is an active process. It requires doing the hard work of acknowledging the diverse range of experiences of special education students and their families, engaging in sometimes difficult and uncomfortable conversations and continuously taking steps to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Hi, Neta, welcome to our meeting.
Yes, hi. This is Neta. I have two schools in the district, one in elementary school and one in middle school. And I wanted to make some comments about what I heard. Right now, the first thing is that I love everything Sarah just said and spoke about SPED and I don't have any children with SPED. My son does have some things he's working on, but it's not through the SPED program, I believe. So, anyway, I agree though that I would love to see an entire board meeting dedicated to this, to know what our district is doing at every, you know. to this, to know what our district is doing at every, you know, level, primary and secondary, and to understand what the resources are for parents. And then, secondly, I wanted to say that the progressive pride flags do not violate any religious beliefs as they're not religious. It is a symbol of acceptance and a love for our community and diversity. And the churches that show their support are not showing their support to say that this is a religious issue. They're saying that it's not a religious issue. That's the whole point. That's why they are showing their support, just like the rest of us in the community. Just because we support it, it doesn't mean that that's, you know, our specific lifestyle. That's not what it means. And no one is being discriminated against because they are not LGBTQ. No one is judging what's right or what's wrong about somebody else's lifestyle. You're still free to teach your children as you wish at home, to live your lives as you wish, and at school. And this is just a way of telling those children who have a different, whatever it is, it's, it's there. I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to say, but the point is that the members of our community in LGBTQ are not supported and we have to support them. And this is part of the way that we do it. This is the most, the current board is so clearly committed to equity, integrity, diversity, and, and all of these things that are so important in our community and for our mental health. And I really appreciate that and I appreciate that the district has been taking the board's recommendations as well. And please continue to do this really important and good work. And hopefully what I said makes sense because I didn't have this planned. So I'm sorry it wasn't prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Neta. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. So the consent agenda is approved 5-0. Reports, discussion, and action items. Summer school presentation.
So I'm joined up here by an amazing group. If we could get our group to come up. So as with previous years for summer school, this year we continue with our expanded summer school program. As you know, this began three years ago with some one-time funding that we had that included many features that we're really happy with smaller classes. We had in-person instruction this year. We had additional EL supports. One thing that's new that, that we want to continue to do for the foreseeable future is additional resource specialist support in our regular ed special, summer school program. We also had our SEL lessons, social emotional supports, and counselors at both the elementary and secondary sites. We continued with the three elementary sites as we have done for the past several years. We did add ELA and math support for middle, the middle school levels. And as in previous years, we had the credit repair programs for high school. So to present on these programs, we've got a really amazing team. We've got both the principals for our ESY, elementary and secondary programs, as well as our directors of elementary, secondary, and special education with us. So I'm going to hand it off to Patrick Hansen Schmidt, who is one of our elementary summer school principals, who will tell, start us off telling us about elementary summer school. Mr. Hansen Schmidt.
Nice to see you all again. So this year, as Dr. Ryman was stating, we had three sites again for elementary summer school. This year, serving K through 4th grade, we added kindergarten this year. Last year was just first, uh, first through 4th grade. For nineteen total days of instruction, June 6th to July 1st, the entire month of June for the most part, for the first half of the day. And you can see all of the principals that had the different sites listed on, on the screen. In the program, we focused on English Language Arts, both reading and writing, mathematics. And then we had specific time for English learners to really boost up their, their skills or vocabulary and so forth. And to start the, the summer school program and to end the summer school program, we have assessments that we give the kids to demonstrate the progress that they make through summer school. What does that data show? You're going to see what that data shows in just a second, but to understand what the data is showing, blue is going to be meeting expectations, red is below expectations. And I'm going to talk about ELA and math for the general population. And then I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Hosseini to talk about the ELD-specific students. So for our ELA, our English Language Arts data, we see positive results throughout. You can see kindergarten went from forty-three percent of students meeting the benchmark expectations to sixty-five percent. First grade from forty-three to seventy-four percent, a huge jump. Second grade from thirty-nine to seventy-five percent. And third grade from nineteen to fifty-one percent. And then fourth grade from forty-three to sixty-seven percent. So this was measuring their phonics skills, their phonemic awareness, and reading comprehension and so forth. For math, we saw the same type of increases. Kindergarten from thirty-four percent to sixty-six percent, first grade from eighteen all the way to seventy-two percent. That's over fifty percent increase. Second grade from eighteen to thirty-three, third grade from sixteen to fifty-five, and then fourth grade from nine percent to forty-two percent. So overall, positive results for all of the students that attended elementary summer school. To talk about our English Language learners, I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Hosseini.
Good evening and thank you. We had one hundred and sixty-six EL students enrolled into three elementary summer schools. In ELA, teachers administered a pre and post-assessment. And data analysis between the pre and post-assessment shows that student performance improved on the post-assessments in all grades, kindergarten through 4th grade. We had twenty-four EL students in kindergarten and thirty EL students in first grade. And based on the post-assessment data, sixty percent of our students in kindergarten and eighty-three percent of our students in first grade met grade-level expectations. We had thirty-four EL students in second grade and thirty-six EL students in third grade. And again, based on the post-assessment data, seventy-two percent of our students in second grade and forty-one percent of our EL students in third grade met grade-level expectations. We had forty-two EL students in 4th grade. And based on their post-assessment data, sixty percent of our EL students met grade-level expectations. We saw the same trend in the math data. Student performance improved on the post-assessments in all grades, kindergarten through 4th grade. Based on the post-assessment data, one hundred percent of our EL students in kindergarten and eighty-six percent of our students in first grade met grade-level expectations. In second grade, forty-seven percent of our EL students, and in third grade, sixty-eight percent of our EL students met grade-level expectations. And in 4th grade, fifty-three percent of our EL students met grade-level expectations based on the post-assessment data. At the end of summer school, we sent a survey to our teachers and the families of our students and asked for their feedback regarding their summer school experience. We received positive feedback from our teachers and our students' families. The slide on, on the screen shows some of the highlights of what the teachers shared with us. Teachers liked the summer school curriculum and said that the summer school structure was focused and effective. They also liked having access to Parent Square as a communication tool. We also sent a survey to our students' parents and asked for their feedback. Ninety-one percent of the survey participants reported that the summer school schedule was convenient. All survey participants strongly agreed or agreed that the program provided a safe environment for their child to learn. Their child came home sharing positive stories from their day and enjoyed attending summer school, and that their child's teacher was approachable and demonstrated a genuine concern for their child's learning. On the question, "How would you rate your child's overall experience in the summer school program?", all survey participants responded that their child had a positive experience and the summer school program was beneficial for their child. And now I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Kevin Nosario. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hosseini, and thank you board for having us today. So I'm here to kind of intro the ESY program, Extended School Year for Special Education. But in doing that, I wanted to also highlight what Dr. Ryman kind of spoke to a little bit earlier. Extended School Year is our overarching program that supports our highest needs students with disabilities based on their IEPs, focused on IEP goals, making sure that they're not losing the skills that they've gained throughout the school year. Our students with disabilities really benefit from routine, and this population specifically really resonates with having that continued routine practice and intervention to support it. So that's driven by the IEP process. Students are identified that way and really benefit from the program when they attend. The program Dr. Ryman alluded to is the other way that we support our students with disabilities, provide them access to our general education program, making sure they have the appropriate accommodations, access, and support to benefit and engage, right? Because our special education students should have the same access and opportunity as our general population. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to our principal for Extended School Year to really dive into the specifics of our ESY program, Liz McCarthy.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for having me. So as Kevin said, I introduced you to what extended school year actually is. We ran the same days and times as the, as the elementary programs. We were all there for three and a half hours. Is it just this? There we go. But we were all over the place. So we had, we had two classrooms, we had two preschool programs going on, each with two classes. So, you know, four groups of kids got, got some intensive preschool time. We were at Chabot for all of our elementary programs. So all of our mild, mod, moderate, moderate, severe kiddos were all at Chabot. And then at the middle and high school, we had our mild, moderate, our moderate, and our moderate severe classes there. And then we, the counseling enriched class and the transition class were up at Redwood. So basically, you know, Kevin just said it, the purpose is to make sure those kids, our kiddos don't lose those skills. Those are, these are kids that we've seen after like the long break, they really do have a hard time getting back to their goals and being on those same reading levels and writing levels. So we kind of get that data and we go, we, we want to extend that school year. So of course, everything we're working on, mostly academics, math, English Language Arts, speech, and continuing that functional skills, how they're doing at school, throughout their day, getting along with others, practicing their social skills, all those really important skills. And I already said that about the regression, so we want to make sure they have this opportunity. So when we look, that one, the, the pie chart on the left is when we look at all of our special ed kiddos, only about nineteen percent really qualify, meaning they, they're showing those regressions. They're, they, we, they need to be in ESY. They need that extra time to keep their skills. And so of that group there on the right, we had almost, almost more than half attend ESY. I think it might, we could do a little better, but I think it was kind of the first summer people really could get out of town. So a few parents are like, nope, we want to get out of here. The curriculum, we, again, we kind of want to keep it the same, right? We want to keep what the kiddos have been working at. They're, they, you know, were able to modify and accommodate our reading program of Fontis and Penel and Eureka Math. We've added the Raz Kids program, so it's kind of an online targeted leveled program for them. All of the special ed students have iXL. It's a personalized computer-based program that targets right at the IEP goals, which are in line with the state standards. Our moderate and our, mostly our moderate severe classes, some of our moderate classes use Unique Learning System. All of those teachers have been heavily trained and supported with a coach on keeping those, those programs going. And of course, teachers are always creating materials because it's, I want to find the targeted area. So with that, with, not only within the classroom, but we were able to have speech and language pathologists for all the classes, any kid, any kiddo who had speech language issues. We were also able to have occupational therapy at least once a week. We had our behaviorists there with us really throughout the whole time, which was fabulous. And then there was some transition support in working with the older kiddos in their, in their transition programs. At the end, of course, we wanted to give a progress summary. We normally have to give a progress summary at every report card, so we want to make sure with ESY, parents got the information on how skills were, were kept up. Highlights, we always have a really committed, dedicated staff who really know the students, like, you know, kind of handpick the teachers who do want to stay on and also the paras who know all the programs really well. So that's wonderful. I think the teachers and the kids feel like they get to do more activities, so I think that's a little bit more fun. At the high school, what was great is those, the moderate class was able to do things with the moderate severe, the mild mod kids would help out the moderate severe. So there's a lot more kind of cross-class collaboration. And I think for the first time, they got to, the counseling enriched class got to take some field trips. That was exciting. Oh, and now, that's it for ESY, and it's now secondary summer school for Jennifer Blackman.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Blackman. I was the summer school principal for the first time. I am the newer principal at Castro Valley, and I enjoyed it a lot. All right, so let's get into some of the details. We had a total of just under five, just under six hundred kids. We had five hundred and eighty-three kids actually participate, which is great. So our breakdown, we had a big Hispanic Latino population at forty percent, followed by the Asian community at twenty, and African Americans. So those are our three highest that attended summer school. All right, so our breakdown, male to female, was sixty, forty split, males being higher. And then our enrollment by grade, as you can see, for our credit recovery. So remember, our summer school primarily is focused on credit recovery for the secondary levels. You can see how many attended there. All right, so our high school distribution of our actual, what they were enrolled in, how many As, how many Bs. So there was a great, if you can see, there was a great, they really did change their grades over. We had twenty different courses and you could take more than one. So you got to realize that these kids were taking sometimes two. I've had a kid take three courses. So you can see that they really did improve their grades, maybe in C range there. All right, this gives you a breakdown of their GPAs, right? Because when you're doing credit recovery, you're really trying to gain that GPA and those credits at the same time. And this tells you where they were the semester prior. And remember, we're still kind of in a COVID year, right? So our GPAs were fairly low. And then what, as with that direct instruction and some of those project-based things the teacher were doing at the high school level, what the new GPAs look like in the certain subjects. All right, credits earned, this is what matters, right? The kids are really trying to, you know, change those classes over, get those credits. So credits earned, we're looking at six hundred and thirty-six. So considering we were still in COVID and the weather was great and they could have been on vacation, they did focus and we did actually have quite a few kids actually earn the credits. Even they were burning the midnight oil, getting those projects in and doing those finals. So the priority was with summer school, I felt was very focused. Remember, summer school was only four weeks and they were dedicated. All right, middle school enrichment, I want to take this opportunity to hype it up because we loved it, they loved it. So students were referred to the counseling department. From there, we sent permission subs home and whatnot. They could take English or math or both. I will say, a lot of them loved it and were like, can I add the second class so they could stay all day? And the curriculum for math, we did edgenuity, which they hadn't really been on unless they had done the, the home program, right? And they loved it. And we also were able to use some of the iXL that we had left over because we have it for the full year and some of the other programs. For the English curriculums, they did a lot of projects. And I think that really engaged the kids. And they even did some of the daily language reviews that they do at the elementary, because remember we had incoming sixth graders and to really hone in on those skills, those language skills. So both English and math were very engaging. Those are some of the actual kids that were there. They wanted me to tell you guys that. All right, so feedback in general, 93% of our teachers reported that the experience was positive and do it again. That includes me. So I know retention is big in summer school, and we would, we would all like to come back. Majority has reported that the curriculum was engaging. So doing this more project-based, doing edgenuity with these, with the secondary at the middle school level was actually a great idea. I have to give Miss, I have to give Vivian some credit for that, but it worked out really for us. And the students reported that they would attend summer school again. There was not one student that I interviewed because I went around interviewing, and they loved it. So, and they described the experience as fun. So if we could, and then before I go, I'm going to turn it back over to Jason. I just want to say the enrichment program, if we have any way of doing it again for middle school and incoming fifth graders, it was amazing and a great experience for all of us. So, and I think we, I'll come back, and I think we all would come back. So I want to just throw that caveat in there. We enjoyed it a lot. All right, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Ryman.
Thank you for your presentation.
And so there actually are three, and you're touching on one of the three main challenges and considerations we have moving forward. First of all, I think it's amazing anytime we have kids saying summer school was fun. Granted, that was the middle school students for clarity. I doubt if all of the high school credit recovery kids would say the same thing, but they did earn their credits. So we've had this robust program for the past few years. When we developed the budget for this year, we weren't, it was prior to the May revise where we saw the increase in funding. So the zero, just as a heads up for the board, we may be bringing back to executive cabinet and possibly to the board as well, a need to revise our budget back up if we want to sustain any of these programs. The budget that we built was around the minimum required program, and the minimum required program is only high school credit recovery and ESY. So those are the only pieces that are budgeted for this summer. So, but we do plan based on the new budget picture to be able to move forward with the program, possibly not as robust as we had last year, but containing many of the same features and many of the same pieces that we can sustain. As Ms. Blackman was saying, the other question is recruitment and retention. As we've seen during the regular school year, recruitment and retention of teachers has been difficult nationally. We're no exception, although we tend to do better than most districts in that regard. We're excited when we hear that folks want to come back. So we want to start early in terms of reaching out and getting on board our administrators, our teachers, and making sure that we can build the best program possible for our summer program. And then finally, the assessments. So having that pre and post data at the elementary level, having data at the secondary levels as well is really going to be a key piece. Elementary already has it, but for secondary, we'd like to develop more common assessments that can be used in the classrooms. The teachers will be able to administer to students so we can look at not just the credit recovery element, but also how much students are learning in terms of actual material. So that's another piece that we want to dig in on a little bit. We have the data on individual courses, as Ms. Blackman has shared with me previously, but we can't, it's very difficult to compare one, for example, English one course to another English one course. So those are the three areas that we're going to focus on moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. We have some questions and comments from board members, if you please. Gary?
Yeah, thanks for the report. I appreciate that. And, you know, I got to visit many, maybe most of the classes during summer school with most of you, and appreciated that opportunity. It looked like it was going really great. So I have two questions, though. The first one is one that I ask every year, and that is, why are our results better in summer school than they are for these students than they are in the regular school year? Is it because they're focused? I'm actually asking you this because this is about credit recovery. Is it because it's the only thing they're working on? It's the second time around that they've seen it? Or what's the magic dust here that's making it work?
I do think high school, because I used to be a high school teacher. I do think at a high school level, when you're given a second opportunity, it is easier, right? Because you've seen it before. But I also think you're motivated. You have four weeks. Like, the teachers did say, this is, do you realize you're going to get all these credits in four weeks? The idea of that, like, it's a gift. Take it, right? So I do think there's an idea of changing their perspective. They have a different perspective during summer, okay? I also think that when given the opportunity for redos, people tend to honor that more, right? Like, you're letting me redo this. You're giving me this opportunity, so I'm not going to blow it. So I do think, when I say burning the midnight oils, the teachers were online emailing them simultaneously. So when we talk about individual plans to support kids, you almost can build that in because you have smaller class sizes, you have, you can do after-school hours, you can do. So there's a little bit of more wiggle room at summer school, as I would say, and opportunities to do individual projects and stuff like that because you have less kids.
That's a good answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second question is, is, this is probably more aimed at Jason, I think. You know, a few years ago, Jason, you probably remember that after summer school, after the first semester following that, we looked at the math scores of the cohort of summer school students, and it seemed like it had stuck. You know, they were successful. Most of them were quite successful, and so it seemed like it carried over. That was very encouraging, and I was wondering if we could look at similar things this year, if you're thinking about that.
We actually talked about it. We were going to try to include it in this presentation. However, report, the quarter just ended on Friday, so we don't have the grades yet. But we absolutely are looking at exactly that to see, especially for mathematics and other programs where it's cumulative knowledge. So we want to make sure that they're, they're learning the core materials that they need so they can be successful in successive classes, for sure.
Mike, and then Lavender, and then Dolly.
I have a comment and a few questions. I was sitting here thinking about the use of the term extended school year for our special education population and was wondering, kind of like, why do we do this to ourselves where we, why don't we just have an extended school year? But, and so, and here I am, like, I don't want to be the Grinch on the school board, just like, let's get rid of summer break. I'm just wondering, as educators, do we think about what the school calendar should be? Are we, do we have the right model? We know that we have learning loss when, you know, we leave one grading, have the summer break. But we also know that we have extended circumstances with COVID. So I'd be curious about that, and then I have other questions for you. That's okay.
I know it's a conversation that we try to think about, right? I mean, especially in my space, the, for the special education population, I'm thinking about it all the time, right? We know that especially for our highest needs students, that consistency, that routine is super important. And I would argue that that's true for a lot of students, right? Kind of broadly, special education, regular education. The extent to which students can recover is different in individual, like, spaces and places. But it's definitely a conversation, I think, in the Ed Services Department where we're talking about. It's like, how do we, if we're going to keep this current model and schedule, how do we support students in ways that they can continue to engage in learning when they're not in school? Or like, how can we find different opportunities to engage with them kind of in those breaks or rethinking the calendar? So it is a conversation we're having, I guess, in short.
And I appreciate a common denominator here is money, right? And tightly centralized in California, how we receive it from Sacramento, that may revise this a big deal. I mean, in my, I think about my own high school experiences where summer school was available to everyone. And I wonder if we could ever be in a place where, if students wanted to get ahead, or maybe the virtual academy is a mechanism for that. I would be curious, just my two last questions. With regards to compensation and retention, are salaries in line with what would be our teachers during the school year? Do we need to talk about that?
So I would say the last couple of years, I think the salary bump up and letting them have prep time in those other hours that were allotted to them, loved it. So I don't, I don't know how we go about that because I know that's linked to some of the COVID. But they were staying after. You understand what I'm saying? They were meeting with the kids in smaller groups. They were prepping. That's why the curriculum was engaging and fun, right? And they were thinking, but we did have that, we did have that funding. So, and they did say that made a difference. I do think that's where the 93%, they, they do feel like the salary was equal to what they were doing. I don't know that we'll be able to continue to offer that, but.
Maybe if I was here, he could clarify. But I just don't know if, like, on an hourly basis.
So there is a slight difference in terms of compensation for summer school in that seniority is based on the number of years you've taught summer school versus strictly based on your seniority as a teacher in the district. So that helps in some ways in terms of retention of teachers who have done summer school in the past. But that sort cuts both ways, right? As a more experienced teacher who maybe wants to, is considering trying summer school for the first time, it may be less attractive. So it's something we've talked, it's, that's a bigger question. It's something that's been negotiated, so it's not something we're looking at changing or even would have the potential to change unless there was mutual interest from both CVTA and the district.
And one thing I do appreciate about summer school, I know many of you are administrators already, but it also is a training ground, right, for future administrators as well? So that, that's also a wonderful opportunity. My last question, I saw in some of those cohorts in the elementary school, I saw some of the classes where, you know, a majority of the students didn't, you know, get to the grade standard. And I'm just wondering, how do we, are we tracking these students afterwards? And are they going to get to the grade level during the, what are the interventions during the school year? And frankly, for the kids that were in the blue, are they getting TLC to make sure that they stay in the blue, if you will, and stay at a great standard, grade level, sorry?
So I'll add my two cents, and then I have a great team here to add into the mix. I think one of the things that the board has supported for multiple years is all around our multi-tiered systems of support. So absolutely, between our tier one, tier two, and tier three instructional levels, we are working very hard to make sure that none of our students fall through the cracks. So after summer school, and from the very beginning of the school year, we, we actually take several days at the very beginning of the school year to do another data dive to make sure that, okay, from the beginning of the school year, we know where our students currently are, and we also know where we want to get them to be. Last year, the entire elementary team spent the entire year finalizing around our essential standards and making sure that we knew exactly what we're holding to say, what are the God knows? What, what are the standards that each of our students must have by the time they leave their particular grade level to be successful in the next grade level? And so now we do the work of, that's, that's what we're all focused on. Our teachers are collaborating around data, as Dr. Ryman said, to make informed decisions about their instructional practices and about how we are going to make sure that our students get those essential standards and really improve that instruction, their, their outcomes. So that work is ongoing. It's the work that the board has supported for multiple years, and it's continuous. And that's what allows us to be successful with all of our students. So are they all there yet? Nope, not yet. But we know that that is our work, that we will focus on daily, that our teachers are focusing on daily, that our administrators are focusing on daily. It's what Dr. Ryman also was saying, we're focusing on on Monday at the professional development. Professional learning communities help with that work.
Thank you. Lavender?
So to that, I'll, the data that you showed, and thank you for talking about our multi-tiered systems of support. I know y'all talk about wins and lessons learned. One data point stuck out to me, EL Kinder, 100%? I mean, woo, good job. Like, that's awesome. How are we sharing those lessons learned so that we can make sure that some of those wins that some of those teachers have, we can share it across and help improve outcomes moving forward? That's a question. Go team. Who's got the best?
Trying to figure out who's going to talk. So I can talk a little bit about the work that we're currently doing to, like, to help teachers get together and collaborate and share best practices and so forth. They're called professional learning communities. And the, the way that they are carried out depends on your school site because teachers have two options to vote for depending on what they want. But we, at least two times a month, depending on the school site, teachers are able to get together, look at data, talk about what's happening within their classrooms, instructional practices that they're using, extra resources that they're using, so that they can learn and share from each other.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And then, but just before I'm done, I just want to make a comment. Really, I'm happy to see a lot of activities with the sped kids, getting them outdoors and engaging with one another. That was pretty cool, like the mild helping out the severe, and I really think that model's awesome. And also making sure they're at a site where all the other kids are for inclusion purposes. I thought that was really neat.
Thank you, Lavender. Dolly?
Yes. Oh, so the first thing is just a bit of a correction. I think CE class had field trips before. I know they did. So during summer school, because they also have them during the year and for all the same reasons, you know, the social, emotional support and that kind of thing. And then I had a question. I wanted to know, really, this might be for you, I'm not sure. When kids are tested in the beginning, some of the kids already were at grade level. So were they recommended by their teachers to be in summer school, or was it a family choice? Or, or why are there some that were already at grade level before?
Yeah, this is actually part of my presentation that I forgot to mention. So teacher, there's a couple of reasons why, well, really, one reason why a teacher might recommend a student to be in summer school, it's if they're not meeting standards in reading, writing, or math. So they could be meeting standards in reading but not in math and be recommended for summer school. And then there's also the parents opt in to summer school or opt out.
Okay, so some of it is choice, and some, maybe their reading scores are grade level but not math or vice versa. Okay, thank you. And also, the last thing I just want to say is thank you so much for running really a great program and all of that, NESY, yeah.
I just wanted to, like, appreciate your clarification. I think we were more highlighting the returning from kind of the COVID era of no access community stuff. We got back out into the community, so, just there.
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to approval of the personnel report.
I'd move approval of the personnel report.
I'll second it.
All right, are there any questions? All right, Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. The personal report is approved 5-0. Board member comments? Quentin, is there anything you'd like to add to your earlier report?
Not really. Just that it's great to see the summer school, all the improvement that's happening with the individual student there. And not really, I'm going to be honest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
I just wanted to report out on Monday this week, I was over at Creekside. I wanted to check out our child nutrition program. I've been curious about it because one of the things I always do when I meet kids in the community is ask them about school lunch. They always want to talk about that, and my, my, my two boys at home like to talk to me about it as well. So I finally got a chance to just see, so if you all don't know, the, at Creekside, we have our district-wide sort of child nutrition services there. And so I got to tour our warehouses, sample some of the food. I had a very nice Caesar salad for lunch. I was really excited to just see everyone preparing lunch and learn more about the program. I think it's going in just such a positive direction with what we saw with the USDA waiver and also with the state of California committing to supporting universal access to food. There's a real commitment to a quality food program. And Sarah from the district office and the Margo at Creekside clearly have a passion for this. And it was, I could have talked to them for hours just to just understand what the, the rules that Sarah has to deal with to just, between where she has to buy and what USDA wants her to do, and the types of foods that are just kind of sent to her. I really admire what she's doing there. It's also pretty fun, too, to just be standing there and seeing your two kids walk through the line and embarrassing them. So I just, I want to just, and make a particular shout out for what Child Nutrition Services did during the pandemic. They were a lifeline for many in our community, and so I just want to thank them for that dedication. And Dr. Ryman, I want to thank you for your acknowledging November, it's Indigenous Peoples Month. And I just want to thank those educators out there this week on Monday who acknowledged Indigenous Peoples' Day and incorporated lessons in their, in their classrooms. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay, so in the last couple of weeks, I visited two PTA Okay, so in the last couple of weeks, I visited two PTAs, Chabot and last night Jensen Ranch, and had very pleasant visits at both of those. Also attended the Eden Area ROP board meeting. There's nothing really exciting to report from that except our former high school principal is doing very well as the superintendent over there. Always glad to see him over there. The most interesting thing that I was able to do in the last couple of weeks was to take a bunch of people from the local Chamber of Commerce and Rotary Club over to the Eden Area ROP. And Blaine Torpey, the superintendent, toured them through the whole facility and showed them all the great programs that are going on over there at the main campus at Esperian. And I think that'll build even more good relations between those organizations and offer maybe some donations and some more internships and employment opportunities for the students. Thank you very much.
All right, so in the past two weeks, I was, I think a day after our last board meeting, able to go to the adult school and tour there. I had a cup of coffee at the cafe that they had. And that was really nice, although I put too much sugar in it. They were very nice to let me throw a little more black coffee on top. And I think the students there were learning really how to do some of the service industry type of jobs. So it was really good to see transition kids doing that. Then I was able to go to the Alameda County Teacher Awards where we had our PE teacher Nancy Galloway, who was also in the newspaper today. And she was honored, what a wonderful educator she is and just a great person as well. And then I also was able to visit Proctor Elementary with Jeff Keller. Let's see, oh, I was able to see, we had all taken a bus ride to see the Measure G projects. I remember in Proctor, there was like some concrete and a bunch of dirt and whatnot that was going to be the lunch area, the covered outdoor lunch area. And that was completed and it really looks very nice, very pretty. Because, I mean, I remember the school before the Measure G, because my daughter went there for a couple of years. So all of the improvements at Proctor look really wonderful. The teachers, the kids were engaged, they're just so cute. All right.
I did not represent the board, but I do have a question for Quinton. I know the winter season is a season of giving in our community. And I know that schools do a lot and I know you'll be reporting out on it. But, you know, we're going to have Thanksgiving soon and I know your leadership class does a lot to feed families. And I know other schools would do it, just would love those updates as they come through so our community can hear about it, but also we can know where we can support it as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We have our canned food drive in November and, like you said, more details to come, so I'll let you know.
Great, appreciate it.
All right, and since the last board meeting, I also went to the Teacher of the Year Award Ceremony, which was lovely. And I also wanted to remind the board that we have had presentations about special ed and, you know, and we've also had workshops highlighting our special ed program where we looked at data along with our administrators. So just wanted to put that out there, that it does happen in public meetings. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.